Good evening, Rolling Meadows. This is the February 27th, 2018 City Council Meeting, beginning at 7:30. Please rise for the Fledge allegiance of the flag.
Fledge allegiance to the flag, and to the United States of America, and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Cannon?
Here.
Bud Matts?
Present.
Majekis?
Here.
Gallo?
Here.
Banjer?
Here.
Deasis?
Present.
Bean Bass?
Present.
At 7:00, present, we do have a quorum. The first order of business is to approve the minutes from the February 13th, 2018 Council Meeting. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
And it has been seconded. Are there any corrections, additions, or deletions to the minutes? Seeing none, the question is, shall the minutes be approved? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and the minutes are approved. I'm asking for a motion. It's now time for our business recognition ceremony. Ask for a motion to deviate from the agenda. Mr. Bud Matts has made it. It has been seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we will now deviate from the agenda. Sorry. Is there any...it was seconded. Is there a vote? You need to make a vote.
Uh-uh. Just need if there's any discussion.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We will now deviate from the agenda. Gee, we wish you were here all the time like this. Really, that would be a great time. Well, greetings. I'm glad that you're all here because, you know, you are what makes Rolling Meadows go, move, and go forward. And I'm pleased to bring out that first And I'm thankful for you two up here so that you have the certificates and you told me about the microphone. I appreciate it. I am pleased to present the first business appreciation awards to those businesses who have gone above and beyond to donate, sponsor, or support community events and programs in Rolling Meadows in 2017. Of those 60 honorary businesses, 20 of them are in attendance this evening. These businesses have provided assistance to local events by the way of sponsorship, money donations, product donations, volunteerism, such as the Taste of the Town, the Veterans Dinner, the City Market, the Downtown Block Party, Friday Rocks Concert, Fourth of July Parade and Fireworks, Parking Lot Party, Community Bike Ride, National Night Out, Wind Down by the Creek, Senior Luncheon, Hometown Hoedown, the Fire Department's Open House, and Holiday Tree Lighting and Spaghetti Dinner. Wow. And we haven't even started the year, and here we go. We owe much of the success of the community events and programs to all the generous businesses that will be awarded certificates of appreciation. We are honored to have 20 of them this evening. Can A&amp;H Management Group, Craig Hirsch, could you come up? And do you have someone with you tonight?
No.
No? Just you? Wow. You...I want to thank you for everything that you've done for the city. I also can remember many years on the Fourth of July Parade with your truck and my kids going after the potato chips, the pretzels, for those of us that have all been there. And how many years have you been in Rolling Meadows now?
I think it's since 1970.
Okay, so... I mean, and you just keep expanding and expanding and expanding.
Fourth generation.
And it's the fourth generation of Rolling Meadows. So that's really...we appreciate you being here, and we appreciate...we appreciate your sponsorship of National Night Out. So thank you. Next up is Bear Construction, Sue Ward. Come on down. Do you have someone else with you tonight? Well, come on, come on. I don't bite, really. I try very hard, so...and I want to thank you for National Night Out, the Streetlight Banner. And how many years has Bear Construction been in Rolling Meadows now? It's over 15 years. So we appreciate what you've done. We thank you for supporting us, and we can't go forward without you. So thank you. Thank you. Ben Franklin Bank, Ivana Horn. Oh. Well, come on down. If you were happy to have you here, Ivana, would you like to introduce your...
Sure. I'm Ivana Horn. I'm the Branch Manager of Ben Franklin Bank at Rolling Meadows. That's Caitlin Wooden. She's a teller. And then Assistant Branch Manager, Heather Vigil Ashoff.
Well, thank you for coming tonight. I do recognize some of your employees for us being former Rolling Meadows High School students. We won't...we won't say how quickly they've grown up, but you have National Night Out, you've been involved with the Streetlight Banners, and you've been a major event sponsor for Wind Down by the Creek. So we thank you for coming forward and doing that, and we appreciate it greatly. Thank you. Next up is Com Ed with Joseph Turdich. You're the External Affairs Manager. Okay. Anyone else come to join you tonight, or is...
Me tonight.
Oh, good. It's exciting. Thank you. I know that many of the times, having been involved with National Night Out and part of Crime Stoppers from the very beginning, that Commonwealth always seems to come up with a little bit of surprise for National Night Out. I mean, one year, I believe it was an ice cream truck, and we just tried to figure out how they did that, but we thought it was great. So I want to thank you for supporting us, and I look forward that you will continue to be our sponsor for many, many years.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is the Community Church of Rolling Meadows, Pastor Randy Smith. And I see you brought along Brian Schroeder and Lori Hill. I had the opportunity to be a guest at the pastor's church on Saturday morning when he held the community prayer breakfast for the city of Rolling Meadows. So I was...it's a great opportunity. And also, you are a block party event partner, which I think you've gone a little bit more, because for those of you that are not aware of, our City Market slash Farmer's Market is moving from here to the community church. So this year, when you come down to visit, Pastor Smith will be there and his whole crew. So we just want to thank you for being an intricate part of Rolling Meadows. You even allow us to block off the street in front of your church when we have a block party.
You can do that on Sunday morning, too.
Thank you. Thank you all. Next up is Constellation Energy, Joseph Boulot. Was I...was I close? Well, thank you. Now, you have been a major sponsor for the Hometown Hoedown, which is, this year, the only thing we're going to ask is we don't want any rain. We just want sunshine. We appreciate it when you sponsor it, but we just want sunshine. So I want to thank you for your efforts with the city. Thank you. Next up is Divine Design and Marketing with Carly Perez. So Carly, did you bring anybody with you today? Oh, well, bring him on down. Oh. Another Rolling Meadows High School graduate. Oh, that's right, too, too. Would you like to introduce these two gentlemen?
This is my son, Teddy Perez. He's also heads up all of our social media marketing. And this is my art director, Lou Natalino, who's my right hand.
Well, I have had the opportunity to interact with you several times this year because you're involved in National Night Out. You're involved in the Fourth of July Parade float. And you're also involved with the Streetlight Banner. So I, you know, it just seems every time we turn around that you and the others, companies and organizations that are here, are always stepping forward to do more than your share. You always want to do, step out to the next level. So I want to thank you and congratulations. Next up is the Hadian. Rupali. Badijay. Was I close or no? Bite? I'm sorry, go ahead. Okay, thank you. And who is your assistant here?
Mine is the accounting manager. My humanist is Trish.
Okay. And I hear there's some exciting things happening down there. We look forward to those. And we want to thank you for sponsoring Friday Rocks, which is a, you know, July event, the Streetlights banners that you've been involved with. And we look forward to the new facility that you will be giving us in the next year. So thank you for your participations. Next up is J.C. Restorations with Amber Bachman.
I'm Warner Cruz.
How are you, young man? You know, I do the best with curveballs. You threw me one tonight, so that's okay. But, you know, J.C. Restorations has done some amazing things. I hope to be around when you pack food again this June. You do that for the community. You're a National Night Out sponsor. You do the Streetlight Banners. And J.C. Restoration does not quit. I mean, on many levels, you can call them for service, but if you're here, having, again, been part of Crime Stoppers and National Night Out, they cook a few hot dogs, right? How many do you normally hit?
Thousands. We'll never run out of hot dogs.
So that's what I was...I just wanted to mention that because I have been there, and all of a sudden, they're out of hot dogs, and the charge goes out. I don't care. Go Jewell, go wherever. We're going to have hot dogs, and they just keep coming and coming. So I just want to say that we appreciate it, and we look forward to seeing you again this year. Thank you. You know, this is the best part of the evening. You probably don't want to stick around for the rest of the evening because you guys are more fun. Next up is Meadows Christian Fellowship, and we have Pastor Andrew B. and Sue Duett. Well, thank you, young man, for coming down here. And, young lady, how are you? Good. They are involved not only with the Streetlight Banner program, but the Fourth of July Parade, the Downtown Block Party Event, and they do a little thing called a Car Show on Friday night. But, you know, since I just happened to look at the...what's happening this week, I'll let you give a little...what's happening this Saturday morning, Pastor?
Well, if you like pancakes, we've invited all of the cruise participants to come and have free pancakes at the church, nine o'clock Saturday morning. So come on over.
So, I mean, they're already starting ahead of time. I mean, I think this warm weather has gotten to them. They want the cars out there. So I just wish to thank you again for your participation, the car show, and all the things you do for Rolling Meadows. Thank you. Next up is Molly Maid with Jeanne Lynn Moore. I'm sorry. Hi there. Now, I told you we're going to have 12 people with you.
Well, have them bow down.
Okay. Okay. Well, I just want you to know that you're part of this, so we're glad to have you here. So...anyway, I just wanted to thank you for the, you know, not only the Streetlight Banners, but you also support the Rolling Meadows Food Pantry, providing space and utilities, and provide weekly cleaning service to wings. So...and how long has Molly Maid been in Rolling Meadows?
15 years.
15 years. And how many employees do you have?
25.
25. Well, thank you for what you're doing, and we hope you just continue to come forward with us. Thank you. I already see there's a discussion about the bund cake in the front row.
Who's going to get it?
Next is Northrop Brumman, Vicky Belik... Dr. Leski, thank you. Oh, and we brought Mike Hutchins. Okay. Well, I want to thank you for coming up here. I've seen your smiling faces on many, many occasions. I mean, not only do you give a grant to the city, but National Night Out, Streetlight Banners, and you throw one heck of a barbecue on American Day every June 30th in Rolling Meadows. And how long has Northrop Brumman been here?
I would say since the late 60s.
Okay. So we appreciate you being one of the largest employers and businesses here in the city. And that'll be the trivia question when I come down to your next year, next June to see what happens. So thank you again for everything that you do. Did...Mr. Hutchins, did you pull rank there to get that cake? One person got the award, one person got the...which brings us to Nothing But Bund Cakes, Cindy Adams. Step on down. Yes. Well, we're going to take a minute here because you are the owner of Nothing But Bund Cakes, but you are a Rolling Meadows resident, and you've bund caked donations to many, 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 many city events. In fact, tonight's bundlet donation to these businesses. So when you have your cup of coffee tonight or tomorrow morning, you can think of Cindy because she's the one who came up, and she was probably up very early this morning, the whole night, John. But I do have to...I do have one challenge with Nothing But Bund Cakes. My family cannot figure out which one is their favorite.
So you're going to guess me. How do I get you to Rolling Meadows?
Well, I have been pitching, how do you get through to Rolling Meadows? So we keep working that out.
Well, that's hard. I can't help you.
I know you can't.
Keep trying them all.
I keep trying them all, but I, yes, I just thought, you know, I'm going to have to work with corporate or something to get you to Rolling Meadows because we would love to have you here. But I just want to thank you because, you know, your bund cakes could become addiction, an addiction. I just want you to go, well, okay, I was trying to be nice. There's a couple pastors out here. I didn't want to tell them I was sitting in gluttony and bund cakes. So thank you. But thank you again for everything you do. You don't want to pick up a cake? Yes, next is Papa Savarios, Michael Polinzi. You know, I have a story to tell about this. I...we...my children, when they're in town, like to order pizza. And so they always trying different places. And my one daughter, who lives out of town, came one day and said, "I have a pizza here for Len Prena." And Mike says, "No, you don't. You're not the mayor." But you've been involved in the Streetlight Banner Program, the Taste, the Town Vendor in '27 and 2018. And by the way, Lori, isn't that coming up on Saturday night? And you'll be there Saturday night with samples. So I just want to thank you. Is there anybody else from your company tonight, or just...
Actually, my wife is here, but she...
Well, I just say, we appreciate what you do to get him to work every day. You're doing a good job. I have no idea. I understand. So...and how long has Papa Savarios been in Meadows?
Papa Savarios has been in Meadows about eight years, but my family's been part of restaurants in Meadows for 30 clusters.
Well, we thank you, and thank you again for everything you do. Roberta Williams Salon? Roberta Marksinkas? Well, I am familiar because that's where my wife goes to get her hair done. And that's how I keep this gray. If you were all wondering, I go there once a month, and that's whether I want it or not. So...but I want to thank you for the Streetlight Banners. And I just recently noticed that you just had a major remodeling?
Yes, we did.
Really?
We've been in Rolling Meadows for 38 years, and we've just been another...
Okay. And did you have other folks here from your salon?
No.
Oh, really?
They were sick.
Oh, okay. Well, I'm sorry to hear that, but we do appreciate that you've been a...donated the Streetlight Banners, and thank you again.
You're welcome.
RTC is next with Richard Nathan. He's the CEO. And you have Jean Carlson with you? Come on down. Thank you. You didn't even have a chance at that cake. That was...see the things that you caused, Cindy. I mean, come on. I mean, you know, we can...so tell us, tell us, how long has RTC been in Rolling Meadows?
About 24 years.
24 years. And you've been a sponsor of the National Night Out, and we, you know, really, really appreciate that. And we look forward that you guys will continue to help us out because it's great that companies like you can help Meadows and the citizens of Rolling Meadows. So thank you again. Next up is Center of the Mind, Linda Foss, who's the owner. I had to say it twice, Linda, because I didn't want to say it. So tell us a little bit about your...overall, you've supported the community events overall, but now you've started out. This is a relatively new business, and...
Um, no, I've been here for about 15 years.
But you have...you've been...
Only growing.
You've been growing, and you've been expanding. So I just want to tell you that we appreciate the things that you've done. I know that I've seen you at some of the events in the City Market. So we look forward that you continue to grow and grow. So thank you again for what you do. Thank you. Next up is the Stadium Sports Club with Vince Buffalino. Well...oh, and you brought your daughter? Okay. Catherine. Vince, thank you. Okay. I'm going to start off and let you tell us how long the stadium has been in Rolling Meadows.
30 years.
30 years. Now, this is not going to be a short presentation, because if any of you've ever come to any of our events, Vince is there. If we need help, Vince is there. And not only does he do National Night Out, he's community events overall. He does a reduced event food, drinks cost. He does the Taste of the Town Vendor for 2017 and 2018. And for those of you that come to the Christmas Tree Lighting, Vince gets up very early that morning and starts cooking sauce and meatballs. And since I've been on, I don't know, the last four or five years in the serving line at Christmas time, there he is. And, you know, he's back and forth. He's got it all organized. What do you need? I'll be there. And even before you think about it, he says, "No, I think you need this. This is what you ought to do." And you really have been an inspiration for just someone who puts their whole heart and soul into the city. So we really, really do appreciate that. So thank you. Next up is Velo Fix Chicago North Shore, which is Phil Sandler. Sandler, I'm sorry, Phil. Now, you're the owner, and if...okay, I got a story about you, too. So I got to go with this. You know, when you go to all these events and you meet all these great people, it's amazing how they help you out because when we do the National Night Out Bike Ride, the Community Bike Ride, well, Phil's there, and he's there with the Farmer's Markets and the City Market. And one day, my granddaughter, who's nine years old, was in a bit of almost tears, my bike doesn't work. Well, there was Phil. And I'm thinking, well, you know, tell him whatever it costs, we'll get it fixed because the granddaughter can get whatever she wants with her little tears. We all know that. He came back about two minutes later and said, "Need an adjustment here, need an adjustment there," and she was off. So you made a very, very happy nine-year-old girl. So I hope you will be there for National Night Out and the Community Bike Ride again because, you know, my bike is getting older, and it's nice to know that you're here. So thank you again for what you do. Now, next up is Village Bank and Trust with a new business in 2017, Tracy Walker. Tracy, did you bring anything else, anyone else with you? You know what that means, Tracy. The whole bund cake is all yours. You're right. I am good. So Tracy, you guys moved in here in 2017, and you've been involved in the community events overall, Streetlight Banners, the Fourth of July Parade, and you really have been a spark since you have arrived here. Now, how long have you been with Village Bank and Trust?
Ooh, ours will be five months.
Okay. Well, that's good. I'm glad you're here, and I hope you're going to be here longer than five months. But I want to thank you for everything that you guys do, and we really appreciate it. Thank you. Fratello's is next with John Menos. You know what? You didn't have to tell me his name. I just... I just recognize him from behind the counter. There we go. So, now, how long has Fratello's been around?
It's over forty years, but my family's been there for twenty.
Okay. Well, thank you. I know that we all figure out where to go for a hot dog. You've been with, you know, Taste of Rolling Meadows in seventeen and, and eighteen, and you're always there. Do you, do you ever go home, really?
Yes.
You do occasionally? Because I know that if you go there for a hot dog at noon, he's there, and if you go for a hot dog at seven o'clock at night, I'm sorry, this is on television, my wife will realize where I've been, so, I apologize. So, I want to thank you for everything that you do. JMLT, John? How do you say that name? Majikis? John?
He is taking care of his mother-in-law.
Oh. So, that means that his wife, Laura Majikis, must come out and thank.
Yes.
Well, you're a sponsor of National Night Out, the Streetlight Banners, and how long has JML been around?
Twenty-six years.
Twenty-six years?
Yeah.
In May? And I can, I can tell you that we, you know, we do have a garage door from them, because we do like to shop locally in Rolling Meadows. And I also can relate a story that our door broke once. And you'd guess what? When you call John, he's ready to go at six o'clock in the morning, because that's when he calls you back. I wasn't quite ready till eight o'clock, but that was okay. It was, it, it worked out, so, I thank, I thank them for being a business in Rolling Meadows, and I thank them for everything they do to sponsor us. And are, are we going to do a picture send? If you'd like some individual pictures, we're going to take a few minutes, like a recess, Greetings, everyone. We're back on the air. This brings us to the part that's the mayor's report. I have to say, it was a busy week in Rolling Meadows. For those of you that went to the sled ice skating for our team that went off to Korea, I was there on Friday night with my grandson. I believe we had close to a thousand people that, that attended. On Saturday morning, I had the opportunity to go to the prayer breakfast with members of the council and the staff. Also, it was, it was a busy day for Meadows, because we also had Jazz in the Meadows, which is the largest music festival in northern Illinois for a high school, and they have approximately three thousand people that attend that. And on Saturday evening, I had the opportunity to go to a fundraiser for Clearbrook, which is in Rolling Meadows. And it was a great time, because we had an opportunity to interact and raise funds for a good cause. Are there any ward reports this evening? Ms. Majikis?
Thank you. I just wanted to mention, I actually have had twice now in the last two weeks, residents contact me regarding the fact that people are putting out their garbage, like, the day after, two days after their actual garbage pickup and leaving it sit out the curb for a week. I've had, I have made contact with Public Works regarding this, but please be respectful to your neighbors and stuff, and don't put your garbage out when it's not supposed to be put out. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Majikis. Any other ward reports? Mr. Baner?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to echo your sentiments about the prayer breakfast. Thank you to Pastor Samantha for inviting us, and it was just a good time. And he, as he mentioned, he's hoping to make that a yearly thing again after a, a short hiatus. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other ward reports? This brings us into ordinances for the second reading.
Meaning opening to the first reading. Meaning open to the public.
Mr. Carlson, I'm sorry. Please forgive me.
It's okay.
That's it. But before, I have something to read for you. I know you've been up here and you know the drill. Thank you. The council meeting is now open to members of the audience for twenty minutes to address the city council on matters that are not on the agenda or regarding other issues. We ask that persons wishing to address the city council, keep their comments to five minutes in length. Comments must be addressed to the council as a whole, through the mayor, and profanity may not be used in any form. Thank you, Mr. Carlson. Please step forward.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Craig Carlson. I'm the owner of Comet Frozen Custard on Kirchhoff, and I am here to speak tonight to ask the city council to pause on the rezoning of the Old Dominics property. And while, again, I've spoke, you know, I think the world of Ryan Homes, and I know Fritz has worked really hard to try to get this thing filled with retail, but I'm not sure that this is the best use for a huge piece of property in really the downtown retail district. And I'm, I'll spare you all the quotes I was going to read from earlier, when Clark Street first bought the property, and there was nothing wrong with the traffic counts, and they had done studies on it, and it was a good decision to buy that property, and everybody was high, because we thought this thing was going to get done. While that hasn't happened, the traffic counts haven't changed. There were some other retailers that wanted to go on Kirchhoff, but I think we all realize it probably can't be all retail. So, is there a better use for the citizens of Rolling Meadows than this? And, you know, one of my, one of my favorite quotes is from Ben Franklin, it's, "If you fail to plan, you're planning to fail." And I would say that if, if this project could be paused, and maybe some work can be done to readdress the, the amount of townhomes that are putting, put on there, and maybe a nice public space for the city to use, I think that would be prudent. So, again, I'm asking you to vote no on the proposed rezoning. I know it's going to come before council again, but I really think for generations to come, Rolling Meadows can do something special in its downtown district, similar to what your surrounding neighbors are doing, and at a, and a very reasonable cost. Thank you.
And thank you for coming forward. Seeing no other signatories, we now move, we now move on to ordinances for a second reading. Ordinance A would approve a three-lot subdivision rezoning of the southern nine point five acres from a C2 general commercial service to R4 intermediate residential amendment to the comprehensive plan and preliminary plan development for 2018, nineteen, twenty-nine, twenty-nine fifteen Kirchhoff Road. This is the second route, reading. It was postponed at February thirteenth, 2018 council meeting. The current position, petition was presented into the, to the city's Planning and Zoning Commission on December twentieth, 2017, as a three-lot subdivision, two point seven-three acre lots to remain zone commercial and facing Kirchhoff Road, and a third lot of approximately nine point five acres to be rezoned to R4 and developed as a townhome and row home planned development. At its special meeting held on Tuesday, December twentieth, 2017, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted one to seven with one absent to recommend against the subdivision, and voted one to seven with one absent to recommend against rezoning, and four-four with one absent as a neutral recommendation regarding the preliminary plan development. Is there a motion to accept this ordinance? So moved, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Diastis has made that, and it has been seconded. Is there any discussion? Mr. Gallo?
I just need to continue to echo the sentiment of the majority of my warden, the fourth ward, that the composition, as it's laid out by Ryan Homes, is not the best use of the property in all of its space, and though it would probably have to have some sort of residential use there, it's more adequate for a commercial space, and commercial is not just exclusive retail, t-shirts and sandwich shops. So, we are not in favor from the fourth ward as a majority.
Thank you. Any further discussion? The clerk will please call the roll.
Bunets?
No.
Majikis?
Yes.
Gallo?
No.
Baner?
Yes.
Diastis?
Yes.
Green Boss?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Five in favor and two opposed. The ordinance is adopted. This brings us to the consent ordinances, the next item on the agenda. It consists of three items, items B through D. Does any alderman wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Mr. Diastis?
Item D.
This brings us to the consent ordinances, the next item on the agenda. It consists of three items. Items B through D, does any alderman wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Mr. Diastis?
Item D.
Okay. The chair, the chair declares it an order for items B and C to, excuse me. In one motion without debate, is there such a motion? Mr. Banjer has made that and made the motion, and it has been seconded. The question is, shall alt, shall both Mormons be, should both ordinances B move forward for second reading? Ordinance B is grant a special use for photography studio at 5105 Toffino Drive. The petitioner wishes to open a photo studio. The proposed use is establish special use in the T1 district. No other zoning consideration is being requested. At a meeting held on Tuesday, February 6th, the planning and zoning commission voted six-zero with three absent to approve the special use. C, amend chapter 23 of the civil emergencies. The ordinance, if adopted, will update the current provisions relative to the establishment, governance, and function of the city of Rolling Meadows Emergency Management Agency. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Majikis?
Yes.
Gallo?
Yes.
Banjer?
Yes.
Diastis?
Yes.
Vienbos?
No.
Cannon?
Yes.
Budmats?
Yes.
Majikis?
Yes.
Gallo?
Yes.
With six in favor and one opposed, it does pass.
That brings us to ordinance D, which is approve a water supply agreement between Northwest Suburban Municipal Joint Action Water Agency, Jawa, and the city of Rolling Meadows. The Jawa recently negotiated an extension of the water purchase agreement from Chicago. This ordinance reaffirms the city's continued participation in Jawa in order to continue to provide high-quality lake water to the city. Is there a motion to move forward? Mr. Banjer has made it. It has been seconded. Mr. Diastis, you pulled it. You have first crack at it.
Thank you. About two weeks ago, there was an article in the paper that with respect to this exactly, and it, the article seemed to indicate that Mount Prospect had done this on their own when Jawa had actually done it. I just wanted to make sure that the people of the residents of Rolling Meadows know that this agreement done by the association of Northwest Suburban Joint Action Water Agency that we belong to has negotiated on several communities' behalf, with the major benefit being a 5% cap on the annual rate increases that Chicago can pass along to all the other communities. So I'm in favor of approving this. I just wanted to make sure that everyone knew that Jawa had done this on behalf of everyone because a resident had said to me, well, how come we can't do that? Well, we did because we're part of the agency. So that was my comment on this subject.
Thank you. Mr. Vienbos?
Yeah, I would just like to echo those comments. When I was interim mayor, I was part of the group that negotiated these agreements, and it's a very powerful group, and they definitely get the ear of City of Chicago, and it's something we need to be a part of, and it's, it's been bearing fruit to help us keep our costs down for water. That's all.
Mr. Cannon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was just going to wonder if I could ask a question of our legal counsel. I just wanted to find out for certain that the 5% thing is a lock in light of our recent experience, the last seven or eight years. I'm hoping that that's locked and they can't play games with that like they did in the past.
Well, or McCannon, I didn't actually negotiate it. Other attorney in my office did.
No, no, I understand.
It's my understanding that's the case.
Okay.
I can certainly confirm that for you between now and when it's up for.
It is actually written into the 5%.
Okay, and it's a lock. They can't play games and skirt it.
No, and that's one of the major issues that Jawa had. Again, it's the cost avoidance because, as we all know, sitting in this room, there was a period of time that the city of Chicago was doing double-digit increases, and that's why it took so long from when Jawa started negotiating with the city of Chicago, specifically the 5% cap and some of the other issues were really why it took so long. But it is written that way, so we have confirmed numbers so we don't have these spikes they've done in the past.
Great, thank you very much.
I will add that since I served, sit on the Jawa board and voted for this agreement, it is captain there. Jawa attorneys were there. Another important part of this Jawa agreement also is they took away, or we no longer have to have a minimum distribution because for some cities, you were required to buy a minimum amount of water even if we didn't use it, and so the residents would be stuck paying the bill. So the two big things that came out of this is the 5% cap, and we no longer have a minimum distribution of water that we need to buy. Any further questions? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Gallo?
Yes.
Banjer?
Yes.
Diastis?
Yes.
Vienbos?
Yes.
Cannon?
Budmats?
Yes.
Majikis?
Yes.
Gallo?
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, that does pass.
That now brings us to new business, which is the motion to approve payments of the warrant for 22718. Is there a motion to approve the warrants? Mr. Budmats has made that. It has been seconded by Mr. Banjer. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Banjer?
Yes.
Diastis?
Yes.
Vienbos?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Budmats?
Yes.
Majikis?
No.
Gallo?
Yes.
Banjer?
No.
Five, four, and two against, the does move forward. That brings us to resolution G, number 18-r-10, award contract for the purchase of a 2018 Suma DC5SX printer. This resolution, if adopted, would authorize the purchase of a new 2018 Suma DC5SX printer for the Public Works Department. This equipment has been reviewed, discussed, and supported for replacement by the Vehicle Replacement Committee. Do I have a motion to move forward? Ms. Majikis has made that. It has been seconded by Mr. Banjer. Is there any discussion? Mr. Budmats?
Just a correction. My understanding is that we're actually looking to purchase a DC5 and not the 5SX printer.
Is that, Mr. Horn, is that correct?
Yeah, that is correct. I was going to follow up with the city clerk following the meeting.
Okay. So we're, so for the record, it's a 2018 Suma DC5 printer.
Correct, Mayor.
Thank you. Any further? Yes, Mr. Gallo?
Does that correction then augment the price that's associated with it? Because we have a price allocated in a budget of $30,000, and this DC5SX is $32,525.
Yeah, the proposal is listed as wrong. The DC SX, DC5SX is actually a $13,000 unit, and it's too small for the sign sizes that we do. The DC5 is a 54-inch unit, which is, does the larger, and it's $19,900. So the prices are correct. The model number is wrong on the proposal as well.
So the price in the document of $32,525 is correct?
The only thing that's wrong on the document is the model number.
And we have budgeted $30,000 for the payment?
Correct.
Is staff doing anything to try and offset that or reduce the price so we're in line with the budget or trying to get below what we budget?
Yeah, there's a, in the proposal, there's a $5,000 allowance for materials. We don't expect to need that material, so our expectation is not to have to spend the whole amount, but until they come out and meet with us and determine what we have currently and the new equipment, we won't know that. That's why it was more of an allowance as opposed to a specific amount.
Okay.
So we don't expect to spend the whole 5,000.
Nothing further here. Thank you. Any further? Mr. Cannon?
So, Mr. Horn, could you, I'm a little bit confused here. So we're getting a different model than we have listed. I understand that. And we had a budget, we were saying, we're asking for $32,000. So is there a lot of supplies involved with this also? I know in the original proposal, there's a number of items that went along with the printer.
Yeah, the, excuse me.
So it's more, so what I'm saying to you is it's more, it's a printer plus a lot more.
Well, there's, for lack of a better word, there's like a stand that gets used, that gets connected to the printer?
Okay.
That actually helps, that actually allows the employee to cut the material. So that is part of it as well. The, it's not 5,000, it's 3,000. There's a $3,000 allotment for materials to get us started with the new diamond pattern that we're required to use through IDOT. Like I said, I don't know that we'll need that. It was just put in dependent on what our stock is now and what our supplies are as far as printer ink, things like that.
Okay. So in light of all the changes that have happened, would it be prudent for us, even if we approve it tonight, for you guys to go out and take a look and see if we can get other people to bid on it, since it's a different model that we talked about? I don't know how many people sell this equipment.
We looked at, and I actually discussed this with Alderman Budmats earlier today. There are not a lot of suppliers that are close by. Many of the suppliers provide the same printer, submit the same models of printer. For example, there was a manufacturer that Mr. Budmats provided, and it's the same exact cost. So they're just suppliers. Suma doesn't sell direct. There's not a lot of different printers. It's not something that I feel qualified to prepare bid specifications for, for a signed printer.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry.
Any further, Mr. Diastis?
Yes. Mr. Horn, you said 5,000, and I'm reading 3,000 in materials on the head.
Yeah, I corrected myself. That's right. It is 3,000. I thought it was 5,000. It's 3,000.
And what about the $695 of one-day onsite setup? Do we need that if we already have?
Yeah, it, there's, there's software that has to be set up, and the printer has to be set up, and they also have to come and get the old unit. It actually is quite involved.
So what's our final cost going to be? Because this, I'm not going to vote yes for this 32.5 ordinance unless I know what the right cost is, and then I would make a motion that we put the right cost into this so we can vote on this because this is, this is incorrect.
It's, it's going to be, it's going to be between 29.525 and 32.525, depending on what the optional supplies are.
Okay, so I will be voting no on this because I don't have a firm number. Not, until you can come up with a firm number, I don't, I can't vote on a range of prices. We had plenty of time to do this, so if you need another week, that's fine, but I'm voting no on this in the way, the way it's written right now.
And that's fine. We can, we can eliminate the optional cost and just go with the machinery and just if we need additional supplies after that, then we'll just purchase those offline of the, this contract. We certainly can do that. It was just provided that way because they're going to be bringing everything down, so that's certainly fine. We can do that.
Then we need to have a motion made for what the final number is going to be, or else. And amended, yeah, amend the description of it and get the right number in there.
Is that something that can happen tonight?
I'm sorry, pardon me.
Would it be easier just to make a motion to postpone this? I would like to make a motion to postpone this, and then staff can make the changes.
That would work out. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have seconded. We have a motion to postpone. We have a second. Clerk call the roll. Any further discussion? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was going to ask, what's the sense of urgency on this?
There's not really a sense of urgency. We wanted to get it early.
Okay, that's all I need. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? The clerk call the roll then.
Vienbos?
I'm voting to postpone. Okay, yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Budmats?
Yes.
Majikis?
No.
Gallo?
Yes.
Banjer?
Yes.
Diastis?
Six in favor and one opposed. It is postponed until our next meeting in March. March 13th, thank you. This brings the council to other businesses and reports. I have no appointments. I have no proclamations. Does the clerk have a report?
The election, early voting for the March 20th primary starts Monday, March 5th, goes through March 19th. And the closest place to vote is Village of Palatine or the court office on Yucatan.
Thank you. That's bringing us to staff reports. Community items of interest, Mr. Carlson.
Thank you very much, Mayor and City Council. Obviously, we have a few things to mention. The first one, because we've already taken care of the election, we have coming up on March 3rd, this Saturday, will be the 17th Annual Dr. Seuss Celebration at the library. I'm not going to read the whole book to you tonight, but they are still looking for readers, and I do appreciate everybody who does read, and Senator Rooney does a reading in Spanish, too. So all are welcome to come. Please check the library time that they do. They have two readings, one in the morning and one in the afternoon. Also on Saturday, March 3rd, the Meadows Cruise Nights, as you heard tonight, will be doing hotcakes for Hot Rods. This is a free breakfast event from 9:00 AM to 10:30 AM at the Meadows Christian Fellowship at 2401 Kirchhoff Road. This is their way of kicking off cruise nights, which will be back at the end of May and going all the way through the summertime for the city. And then finally, on Saturday, March 3rd, and you'll hear a little bit more about that, The Taste of the Town, and that will be from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM at Community Center, 3705 Peasant Drive. Tickets cost $15. You can buy them at the door. And again, we do appreciate everybody participating in different events on that Saturday, March 3rd. The next one that we do want to mention is that Tuesday, March 6th, between noon and 6:00 PM at the New Kurtz Fire Station at 2455 Plum Grove Road, we will be doing a blood drive. Welcomes are welcome. Please, if you would like to register for a time or give us a count when you might be over there, you can always call 847-397-
Then we need to have a motion made for what the final number is going to be, or else, and amend it, yeah, amend the description of it and get the right number in there. Is that something that can happen today?
I'm sorry, pardon me.
Would it be easier just to make a motion to postpone this? I would like to make a motion to postpone this and then staff can make the changes.
That would work out.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have seconded. We have a motion to postpone, we have a second. Clerk call the roll. Any further discussion? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was going to ask, what's the sense of urgency on this?
Not really a sense of urgency, we wanted to get it early.
Okay, that's all I need, thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? The clerk call the roll then.
Vienbos?
I'm voting to postpone, postpone, okay, yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Bud Mats?
Yes.
Majikis?
No.
Gallo?
Yes.
Baner?
Yes.
Diastis?
Yes. Six in favor and one opposed, it is postponed until our next meeting in March, March 13th, thank you. This brings the council to other businesses and reports, I have no appointments, I have no proclamations, does the clerk have a report?
The election, early voting for the March 20th primary starts Monday, March 5th, goes through March 19th, and the closest place to vote is Village of Palatine or the Court Office on Yucatan.
Thank you. That's bringing us to staff reports, community items of interest, Mr. Crumstock.
Thank you very much, Mayor and City Council, obviously we have a few things to mention. The first one, because we've already taken care of the election, we have coming up on March 3rd, this Saturday, will be the 17th Annual Dr. Seuss Celebration at the library. I'm not going to read the whole book to you tonight, but they are still looking for readers and I do appreciate everybody who does read and Senator Rooney does a reading in Spanish too, so all are welcome to come. Please check the library time that they do, they have two readings, one in the morning and one in the afternoon. Also on Saturday, March 3rd, the Meadows Cruise Nights, as you heard tonight, will be doing hotcakes for hot rods. This is a free breakfast event from 9:00 AM to 10:30 AM at the Meadows Christian Fellowship at 2401 Kirchhoff Road. This is their way of kicking off cruise nights, which will be back at the end of May and going all the way through the summertime for the city. And then finally, on Saturday, March 3rd, and you'll hear a little bit more about that, The Taste of the Town, and that will be from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM at Community Center, 3705 Pheasant Drive. Tickets cost $15, you can buy them at the door. And again, we do appreciate everybody participating in different events on that Saturday, March 3rd. The next one that we do want to mention is that Tuesday, March 6th, between noon and 6:00 PM at the New Kurtz Fire Station at 2455 Plum Grove Road, we will be doing a blood drive. Welcomes are welcome, please, if you would like to register for a time or give us a count when you might be over there, you can always call 847-397-3352. And then obviously, from March 8th, starting next Friday to Sunday, the 11th, the Rolling Meadows Library Spring Book Sale will be happening and you can contact the library for those times and hours that they will actually be open for the library spring book sale. Then we have coming up, a week from this Saturday, is the Rotary St. Patrick's Day Dinner, which is again scheduled for Saturday, March 10th. It is the 18th Annual St. Patrick's Day Dinner and Auction. It is prepared by the Rotary Club of Rolling Meadows. It's scheduled to be from 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM at the Rolling Meadows Community Center, 3705 Pheasant Drive. There are tickets for sale, the city hall, Rotarian is not here, but you can always buy tickets from Public Works Director Fred Vogt or Park District Director Amy Charlesworth and you can contact Amy at 847-818-3220 or obviously, as I said before, Public Works Director Fred Vogt, 847-963-0500. All are welcome to attend, we do have flyers throughout here. And again, the next item that we do want to mention is on Sunday, March 11th, daylight savings time begins. Remember to spring forward one hour and it is also smart to change your batteries and your smoke alarms and smoke detectors. That's your fire safety message for the month. But we also have on Thursday, March 29th, between 6:00 PM and 7:30 PM at the Rolling Meadows Library, there will be a meet and greet and seed swap. I had to say that slowly so I wouldn't merge it. For the gardeners and those who want to talk about the community garden, Alderman Baner will be running that seed swap and discussion. And again, if you would like to talk to him about a community garden plot, that's a great opportunity for him to talk to you. And then obviously, because it's the last meeting of February, we just want to remind people that the February Electronic News and Views is actually out there, and then a reminder that we do six times a year printed news and views and then six times a year we actually have the e-news, and again, that's loaded on the website so anybody can actually see that. And because it is the last meeting of the month, we do want to mention what's coming up for March. So we do have an Economic Development Committee meeting for Tuesday, March 6th, at 6:00 PM in the council chambers. Tentative items for discussion consist of new business feedback and contact distribution, business and community showcase discussion, and again, the showcase happens on April 28th. And then we have the restaurant incentive discussion, the business advocate highlight and items of interest in the Chamber of Commerce, followed by other items of interest for the city at that Economic Development Committee. Also on Tuesday, March 6th, the Planning and Zoning Commission will be meeting at 7:30 here in the council chambers, and there's three public hearings that are tentatively scheduled and it consists of one preliminary and final approval of a four-lot subdivision with variations, the property located at 2160 Dupont Avenue, that's in Palatine section of Rolling Meadows. It is in the R1 District Residential. Petru Popa is the petitioner. The second item for public hearing is a sign appeal to allow a digital off-premise sign at the property located at 3975 Algonquin Road. Jim Perry from Lamar Billboard, or Lamar Advertising is actually the petitioner here, that's one of the items that we had at a past community hall. And the final item that is scheduled for public hearing on that night is a text amendment to modify the requirements of a side yard on a corner lot and City of Rolling Meadows is the petitioner for that. With those, those are the quick items that we have for items of interest.
Okay, and I believe we come right back to you for new business, Mr. Crumstock?
Sure, for January 2018, we have submitted the list of new businesses, there were eight new businesses, there were two of them that were home occupation, and one of the locations that actually is on this list is a second location for a company that's already in Rolling Meadows. Nothing to really highlight other.
Okay. Well, something that we've all been waiting for all evening is The Taste of the Town and Ms. Lori Cizak will give us the details.
Thank you, Mayor. This Saturday on March 3rd, the second annual Taste of the Town event will take place with 13 Rolling Meadows restaurants participating this year. This indoor Taste of Rolling Meadows will feature delicious sample portions while supplies last from the Stadium Sports Club, Asian Tokyo, Bonna Beef, Chef Ping, Chicago Hickory Roasters, Fratello's, Gus's Diner, Honey Baked Ham, Papa Severio's, Peppies, Red Apple Pancake House, Senor Tacos, and Myers Bakery. To taste from these fine establishments, guests will be charged $15 to enter the event, which will also feature live music by local artist David Page. There will be a cash bar with beer, wine, pop, and water, as well as a 50/50 raffle split toward the end of the evening. We hope to see you this Saturday, March 3rd, at the Community Center from 6 to 9 for this fun night out. This event is hosted by the City of Rolling Meadows, the Park District, the Community Events Foundation, and the Chamber of Commerce. Thank you.
And thank you, sounds like it will be a grand time. Are there matters not on the agenda? Mr. Cannon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For future council meetings, I would like to revisit a couple of subjects that I brought up in the past and see how people feel about them now. The one subject would be looking at doing some street escape work on Kirchhoff and possibly Gateway Park, make possibly some more inviting areas along there. The other subject I'd like to bring forward is compensation for the mayor's office and for the alderman, along with expense money for both. I'd like to see both of those within three or four months, please.
Thank you, Mr. Cannon. Any other items not on the agenda? Is there a motion to adjourn? Mr. Baner has made it, it's been seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?